Larry Swafford, United States Navy retired. Judge, Commissioners? Sir? Sir? I want to thank you first and foremost for your service and being here today because without you we couldn't have this forum. My question to you, although this operation is supposed to be denied, and I have assurance from several other sources that it is, as you mentioned, there would only be one, two Humvees, imagine they're armored 12,100-pound Humvees, as they move through our roads, will you be able to reimburse, fix any roadways? As also mentioned, any of your personnel going through our town, often there is mayhem, as you will, sometimes just out in town drinking.
I think we understand your question. Let's go ahead and get an answer to that question about, you know, what is the weight of a Humvee and how much damage is likely to do to our citizens?
Look, generally, the low-end Humvees are one-in-four ton Humvees. If they are armored, they do scale upward. That would be something that we take into consideration. But within the memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding, that is spelled out bringing damages within that document.
We know the heaviest, if these equipment or anything on the other side is a water truck. How big is a water buffalo?
500 gallons, eight pounds per gallon, so.
Okay, let me go to a question from a card, and then we'll have another question from this audience. And we have very, very many, very good questions. The question here is, has to do with, why is this focused in the South? Why three months? I think you kind of entered the focus area because you created a foreign country for this training. Why the, why the location and timing of this?
Well, the timing itself basically has to do with the rotation of forces. As I've said, after 14 years of combat, we're still engaged in combat. We have a heavy op tempo as it is. So it comes to the availability of the units. We've had some units have to back out because of real-world missions. So that's where the timing comes into play. This was the best time possible to conduct the exercise. And again, it comes to challenging terrain and exposing our guys to different environments. And we've seen that. The long distances offered here in Texas are exactly what we're looking for to push our guys to the limits.
Thank you. Let me recognize, first, Debbie, Deborah Jones, for a question from before, and then secondly, the gentleman to my right over here. Thank you for being respectful, Debbie.
Are you going to actively include the local police and sheriff departments in your activities? You know, I'm hearing that you're going to be gaining information, and what kind of information? And are you going to use our local people to help with that?
So, we're not training any type of law enforcement during this training exercise. It's not happening. The only coordination there that will take place is we're just letting them know, hey, here's what happened last 24 hours, here's what's happening next 24 hours, so they can maintain situational awareness and just make sure that we're living up to the memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding that has been purged from this town.
Very good question, Debbie. A written question from downstairs. Why was Bastrop County picked out of all the counties in Texas? And how would it affect the routine daily lives of our citizens?
So, how counties were picked in Texas comes down to this. The land was volunteered by the private landowner. They came to us, okay? They are not getting any reimbursement for volunteering their land. They believe in training America's special operations forces, not only in order but also indeed. And that's how these counties were picked. From there, we come to the governing body, and we see a dual concurrence. Again, it's a private landowner volunteering their private land for our use.
Thank you. The gentleman here in the jacket.
Oh, sir. Your Honor, there's a.
The second question is, how will it affect our routine daily lives?
First and foremost, we're truly invested in everybody's personal rights and their privacy. That's what we live for. We live to support the Constitution of the United States, and that's what everybody wants to live by. And that's what we're here to do. So, privacy, personal rights, top priority. We're not going to interfere with those. We're not going to interfere with people's livelihoods or negatively impact their economy. So some of the counties that we're in, they're very concerned we're going to disrupt recreational activities. It's not going to happen. So, any type of farming that takes place here, any type of other commerce where this could be an impact by having two Humvees come through, we'll take that all into consideration and work it out with the governing body.
Question.
Judge, in light of the people's, my name's Jim Dill. In light of the people's overwhelming opposition to this martial law program, would the Commissioners' Court consider reversing their invitation to these guys? And would the Court be offended if I told the Colonel that I didn't believe a single word that he just said?
Thank you for your question. The answer is, the agenda item today is for discussion of this program. There's no action on the agenda for this program. And it's, you know, in the age in which we live, there is a considerable amount of distrust of all government at whatever level. And the reason we're holding this special meeting is to answer questions so that you, as citizens of Bastrop County and America, can feel better about this special meeting. I have a written question from downstairs, and then we'll get to another one from here. Will any part of this exercise be martial law? And is anybody getting paid, including the police or any elected officials?
Okay, the first part of the question, your honor, no. It has nothing to do with martial law, period. We are Title X forces, not Title 32, nothing like that. No martial law in any way, shape, or form. We basically, simply want to train the United States Special Operations Forces for future operations overseas. That's it. That's where we operate daily. Even right now, while we're all standing here, there are guys putting everything they've got into it against an enemy that is very determined to rid us off of this planet.
And that's it. Is anybody getting paid?
No, no one's getting paid, your honor. They volunteered the land, and no one in the municipality, no one in the law enforcement either.
All right. Colonel, would you explain about Title X, Title 32?
They are the Army National Guard, Title X forces are your active duty forces, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. We have a question here. Please say your name.
My name's Keith Hopper. I don't know if you recognize me, I'm usually up here, so I don't know if you recognize me, but I do recognize you.
Keith, this is not personal. I just asked your question.
One of my questions is, well, first of all, you saw Commander General Cleveland, you split Commander, Darcy Rogers. I've got a statement on that, I'll say that real quick. But one of my questions is, can I have answered it? On property damage, who's going to be our point of contact in this community? The fences are broke, gates left open, cattle horses get out. Who's going to be the point of contact that these people go to and file that claim?
That comes back under the County Courts Commission because that's the best, not random, the brand of understanding is what.
Okay. Now, my statement is, I've been a Green Beret for the last 26 years with 10 special forces. I do know you saw Commander and you split Commander very well. Three Sergeant Charles Cleveland and a two-star Darcy Rogers. And I'm going to tell you, from my experience in combat with them, these two men cannot be trusted. When they tell you something, you take it with a grain of salt. And when you go back to Fort Bragg and you do your debrief, you let Charles Cleveland know, my name is Keith Hopper. He'll remember because he knows exactly what he did and he knows I know. And I will do everything in my power to let this community know, these two men cannot be trusted.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper. The gentleman in the t-shirt with the white radio and stuff, but I have a question here from, if you get the microphone, then he'll be next. I have a question from downstairs. Explain the Title J-Helm 15 logo. What does that mean?
The logo?
What is that? J-Helm 15, is it acronym or is it?
No, it is not an acronym.
Is it code words?
Right. No, there's no code words with it. Somebody made an acronym for it. They were very creative in their thought process on alternative media, they come up with that. Very creative indeed. Bottom line, this is a joint DOD-recognized exercise. So any training exercise that is recognized at the DOD and at a guard level has to have a training exercise named associated with it. J-Helm has no special significance whatsoever, period. Much like any other training exercise or operation, you name it as a point of reference. So that way, when somebody comes into my office and starts talking about J-Helm, I know exactly what they're talking about. Give it a minute.
The follow-up question there is, what about that strange image in the center where the sword and arrows crossed? What, do you bring that up?
Okay, so the arrows, the cross arrows, as some people out here are from special forces, community that is the branch insignia for special forces. The dagger going back through there is the commando dagger from World War II. The clog in there is a Danish clog that goes back to World War II up in Holland, Norway, and the like during the occupied days. People who were in the resistance threw their asadoths, their shoes, into machinery, and machinery would break. Hence sabotage came from that activity. And that's one of the things that the special forces do in unconventional warfare environment with the people they're trying to conduct with. So it's traced back to those kinds of World War II.
Okay, one more thing on the logo. Who made up this subtitle, Master of Human Domain, and what does that mean?
So, Master of Human Domain is a construct that we operate in. It's actually the human domain. It's recognized at the Army level, and what that is, is there, there is no longer a linear battlefield after 14 years. So if you think that there's going to be another great war where it's the Allies against the Axis, or even the American-led efforts against the Lord of the Rings and the Chinese, that's just not how warfare is conducted anymore. It's asymmetric in nature. And what is effort or by for, by the enemy, is the human populace. You have a gentleman in the Middle East, we'll call him Abdullah Ali. Okay, so Abdullah Ali is able to provide you food when you can't get food. He's able to get you clean water when you can't get clean water. He's able to start up a school in your local community. And then one day Abdullah Ali comes to you and says, hey, would you mind hiding this anti-aircraft missile for me? He's never asked that population for anything before, but he has only provided. He has worked the human domain, they take the anti-aircraft missile and they hide it for him. His population centers. How do we counter his credibility, his influence that he has when we come in and we move into an area for three days, four days at a time? How can you instantly pick that apart and figure it out? That is the human domain that we operate in.
I appreciate that explanation very well. And a next question from before.
Yeah, I'm Staff Sergeant Joe Biggs, U.S. Army, retired, Infowars.com, and I have a question. You said your training will be to blend in for overseas combat missions, so I'm kind of curious how these special operations guys who look like us, look like him, are going to be practicing blending in when we all look the same? Don't they need to train in an area overseas for the combat they're going to go to? Because that, quite frankly, doesn't make sense to me from my time in the military because you guys have Fort AP Hill in Virginia, the asymmetric warfare center, that has a school, a soccer field, a subway station, a bank, all that, and you're training on these environments which look like here. That's why people are concerned.
Excellent question. Do you have any?
So, with that, realistic military training occurs off of the federal installation in the local area. That's what we're doing. As far as blending in, yeah, you take a guy from Fayetteville, North Carolina, I dress differently than people dress here. It's regional. It's one of those.
I've been at Fort Bragg, I was there for seven years.
You may not like the answer, but that is, that is how it is. And you may have been at Fort Bragg, and people dress differently in and around the 10 surrounding counties, and you've seen it. In the 10 surrounding counties, people dress differently, and you've seen how soldiers dress. And you can snicker about it all you want, but that is the truth.
Okay, that's. A question. Sure, if you'll come back to.
Air compression. How are they going to blend in?
So, this question from downstairs will ask about private property.
So, we're going to have a run on public type of T-shirts?
Any activities taking place on private property against the owner's wishes or permission?
Simple answer is no. They volunteered the land, we've worked everything out with them, explained the concept of the training and the agreement to it. There's also memorandum of agreement, memorandum of understanding.
So there's no scenario of which of your guys are going to be running through Grandma's backyard in downtown Smithville in the middle of the night?
Correct, there's no scenario like that.
If you see something like that, call 911 immediately.
It has nothing to do with us.
All right, thanks. Second question. The instruction is to speak into the microphone, but don't hold it too close because it rattles. But in order for the Skype camera to pick it up and take it downstairs to hear your question, so, tell us your name and ask your question.
My name is Debbie Starch. I'm the Assistant Chief in Department of Homeland Security Department. And for this, we determine the areas between Smithville and Bastrop. We have concern, certain of us have concern, we're very independent people out there, and we have a large faction that do not trust the government. We have a lot of people who contact us as individuals in the department, even though we know nothing, asking for more information. A, is there anywhere that they can go? We can go, we'll come here in a public forum. B, you know, just to ask a question, just to find out information. B, will there be a map available to the public to kind of ease their concerns? And at any point, if something goes wrong, will the departments, you know, there's nine departments in the county, will we at least be made aware of it so that we can prepare, so that we make sure, okay, well, maybe this weekend we shouldn't go off. Maybe we should stay around.
All right, so I think there's three points to your question here. Let me reverse that. The conduit for information comes back to the county here, who we'll be touching base with, going over the last 24, next 24. Everyone who's involved with the exercise has comms on them, communications on them to make certain that we're talking, if emergency occurs, we're dialing in right then and there. Okay, and then?
Map.
The map, okay. So the land is private. If the landowner chooses to disclose who he is or she is and where it's taking place, that's up to them. We value their privacy just like everybody else values their own privacy. That is up to their own personal decision to volunteer their private land to do so. So that is up to them, it's not up to me to make their private business public. And there was a third point earlier.
First man, first man, this is what I was worried about, my understanding was that it's a second term. I don't think, you know, there is such a high density. There are backyard conspiracy theories, meetings, it's a conspiracy. I am very concerned, my father, my sister, you know, they both come back there, you know, concerned about the soldiers.
And that's why this training is taking place on private property?
There will be no overback, no unattended property.
There will be transport from one place to another on roads.
So it's more than.
From one place of private property to another place of private property.
Where's the blending? Where's the blending?
No, not Bastrop State Park.
Private property. Thank you. From downstairs, this question, is it correct, the exercise is initiated under the jurisdiction of the Department of Homeland Security?
No.
And I'll just ask this, where it's written, when we have a federal government that cannot tell the truth, how do we know that what you're saying is true?
Just ask everybody not to mix apples and pumpkins, okay? Let's do it that way. This institution right here has been around for over 240 years. I've transitioned in this uniform, various shades of it, under five presidents, all of it peacefully. You may have issues with the federal government, you may have issues with the administration, so be it, okay? But this institution right here has been with you for over 240 years, period.
Lady in the red blouse. Say your name, please.
I'm sorry, my name's Sandy Churchill, and I'm in Roseanne. You've stated that the FBI and DHS is involved.
Not DHS, no.
And other agencies.
The State Department.
Right, is FEMA going to be involved?
No.
Thank you. Judge, yes, it's going to die down there. Do you want to order orders, or what are you asking? I want to. May I have the microphone, please? Let's not do that. I have a question that wasn't answered. Most people have questions.
What's your question?
Listen, America, do it. You only, you only mentioned two Humvees. Out of all these members of the military that are going to be here, please be seated. Please be seated. We're not going to, we're not going to do that. We will take it decently and in order. Raise your hand, and I'll give it to you as soon as I can. Mr. Herr, as is in, if you get the microphone, I'll, I'll read your question from downstairs. If a private citizen is asked to participate and refuse, what will J-Helm's response be?
Then we don't participate with that private citizen, and the agreements have already been reached.
Okay, so there will be.
And they can still back out, they can still be like they want to, and that's fine.
But as part of the exercise, you're saying that there will not be any interaction between any of the military personnel who will be in the county and private citizens on the street or in a restaurant or?
For exercising purposes, your honor, no. Or if it matters to going to eat a cheeseburger or an ice cold Coke, yes. The kids are going to want a can of Coke, maybe. They may want a can of marbles, they may want a can of Coke.
All right, good, that's fine. Mr. Herr.
I'm Robert Allen, I'm Cedar Creek. For all the favorite book with me is Hunter Ridge Dictionary. And my question is, I want you to press receiving this and cutting it out and not bring it back by any other name that your strategists may find in this dictionary that has anything to say that it is a preparation for martial law.
That's because it is not a preparation for martial law, sir. That's what you say.
Thank you, and please do for that sixteen answer. The gentleman in the black shirt with the glass sunglasses, I wish you'd remove your sunglasses, it's not that bright in here. Do you have a question? Well, all right. Get the microphone, meanwhile, I'll answer, I'll ask a couple of questions. You've answered some of these already, so I'll try to weed them out. Will, are there any activities of this training exercise to which the public will be subjected?
No.
All right. Will soldiers enter anyone's home without their consent?
No.
Will military commander, will a military commander confiscate or take our food, water, fuel, or other belongings without their consent?
No.
All right, your question, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, my name is Bobby Joe Wells, precinct 2009, Bastrop County. Colonel, you've said that this is a training military exercise, and this training entails unconventional warfare, which is guerrilla warfare, guerrilla warfare training, which includes PSYOPs, psychological operations, which is a weapon, psychological warfare is a weapon. And it appears that these PSYOPs are taking place right now. And psychological operations being psychological warfare, that would be a weapon being used against citizens if you're talking about blending in, obtaining information, and all that sort of stuff. How do you respond to that, sir?
One, there's not a PSYOP campaign going on associated with that. This is an information brief, and that has nothing to do with the private citizens in Bastrop County. So I wish you'd clarify the question because it sounded more like a statement in the end.
The question is, is psychological, the psychological operations, is it considered psychological warfare? Do you, is it considered weaponry in your Army training?
No, it's an operation, it's a line of operation, or a correctional line of effort at that point, not an operation. It's just the way that the effects are passed differently. So I'm not going to get into this.
Okay, well, what I'm talking about is intelligence gathering, you know, on citizens.
That's not going to occur with this training exercise.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Glad we got to that question. I would should ask that, how much intelligence gathering will take place from the public or from the private sector? And the answer is?
No.
No, thank you. Mr. Herr, if you'll move back to this side of the room, there's several who have their hands up. The lady sitting over the end of the second row, I'd like to go to her next. While you're moving that way, from downstairs, how is it coming to matter with Texas and domestic, and the domestic U.S. terrain benefit your soldiers in foreign training?
It's the ruggedness of the terrain, and it's the long distance associated with it. These guys, they're going to move, and we're going to move them on highways and things of that nature. We're going to get them from point A to point B, but they have to work with the role players in order to say the right things to make that all possible. So, long distances occur. If you start looking at a country like, say Afghanistan, and how it measures up to Texas, Texas is 10% larger than Afghanistan. And the special operations and how they operate over in Afghanistan, from one corner, east or west, north to south as well, they're all over, and they have to move around quite a bit. And to synchronize operations like that, it's a considerable amount of effort. This is an operational level training exercise. And it's the really hit to the heart of the matter is, how can we communicate with our guys out there in very remote places?
Good. Mr. Herr, please. Say your name, please.
Hi, my name's Mary Hallson with Rachel Elepines Radio. I come out of Houston. But I just want to clarify, you said that private landowners came to you to offer, to volunteer their lands, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then you have memorandum of understanding?
And agreement, yes, ma'am.
And agreement. And so then, now you have also that MOA with the county, is that correct?
It's part of the RMT process that I described earlier.
Okay, well, what I'm curious about is, how long has this agreement been in place before the citizens have known? And, you know, what kind of arrangements have been made before everyone else here has known about that?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, you can. Ma'am, we did that in accordance with Texas law as part of having items.
About items?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Ma'am, we did that in accordance with Texas law. Anytime something's brought before a municipal body or a county courts commission, X amount of days, it has to be posted in advance. So with that, incorrect info on, Your Honor, I am resident of North Carolina and that's the again, I believe it's three working days has to be published for.
Did that say what?
And it was.
Published for this agenda today?
And previous.
And previously, before the agreement was signed?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Okay, I'm just asking to clarify.
Sunshine, all about it.
But where? These gentlemen, first people.
Don't hand though.
These gentlemen, first people, CS, late last fall, who talked to us about this idea of realist, real estate training here in Bastrop County. They followed us back with a formal meeting with the Commissioners' Court in January of this year, which was in a posted meeting, a public meeting. And at that time, the County Commissioners' Court voted to welcome them to Bastrop County for this RMT.
No problem.
Let me read a couple of more questions, and where are you, Mr. Herr? Why don't you get the gentleman in the black shirt, right there, and let me read this question. This is from a business owner here in Bastrop County, I won't name the business, but I'm sure others feel the same way. I'm concerned that this will scare our guests away since they will stay with us for peace and quiet. Is this going to be a noisy and disruptive operation that would scare anyone away from Bastrop County who might be coming here for peace and quiet?
There will be very little noise associated with it, and that which does take place will be on private plan. The area selected is remote, and it's a vast amount of acreage, so it has, it will not negatively impact people's livelihoods or businesses.
Thank you. This gentleman, question please, say your name.
Yeah, I'm Michael Dill, Bastrop. Just a question, maybe in future reference, the, none of the public ever seems to be invited to help make decisions on things that are brought into the county of Bastrop or anywhere, it seems, until way after the fact. And we can never go back to maybe have our own vote or say whether something can be put in place and all kinds of things. So, how are we going to be able to get out the, to the community, things are going to be happening, and be able to vote on them before they're actually put in place and no longer have a say, before we can do any of that? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to try to answer that from your perspective. And I'll quickly answer.
I mean, kind of both of y'all respectfully.
I just want to make sure if I understand what you're asking. You want to have a vote in what the private landowners or uses this land for?
Well, I mean, instead of this happening like it is right now, we could have known way, instead of it being like this right now, we could have known way prior that Jade Helm would be a program that may or may not be coming to Bastrop and have a vote and a citizen vote on whether we do or do not want that to happen. And be given proper information to make that decision instead of a short five or 10-minute reading and then mostly questions, which are all going to be mostly negative because we don't know what is really going on.
Which is...
And that's from like the Commissioner being, respectfully, that. You come to the Commissioner and ask, but not us.
Thank you, Mr. Dill, for your question. In addition to the perspective of the military traders, I will say that we take seriously this concern for us, our representative democracy for government. And we are asked from week to week, and those of you who said on the earlier meetings, and I saw, heard, and saw, how we go through the agenda and consider the items that are brought to our attention, ask many questions, some of them difficult, perhaps negative questions. And then we make the best decision we can representing our constituents in this county. And when we heard about this with the preservation of data, there was no reason for me or for any of these Commissioners to oppose that we go out to maybe a referendum vote on this proposal.
Bastrop, how are you going to be gaining pockets from this exercise in the long run?
Part of our consideration was the potential economic benefit to businesses in Bastrop County who will gain from the experience here, so individuals that'll be accounted for a lot. But that's the process and appreciate you asking. And I hope you understand that we make many decisions, weighty decisions here every two weeks when we need them. Another question from downstairs has to do with, and I appreciate Commissioner Pena's perspective on military history. Their comment is that the last time they remember something like this had to do with World War II. And they even talk about rounding up Japanese Americans and entering them in camps. Will Jade Helm infringe on anybody's personal civil rights?
No, we're here to preserve that. Again, that's what we take and vote to for, you know, the Constitution. It stands administrations. And the institution has been around for 240 years. We're here to protect all people. Those who cannot protect themselves, those who can, young, old, no matter of race, religion, creed, anything like that. That's what your army does for you. And that's why we all wear the same antar, US Army.
All right. Let me give you this question. Mr. Blake, where are you?
Over here.
Let's go over to the gentleman on the third row on the far right and then we'll come back to the gentleman in the black shirt on the second row. While we're going there. I'm not seeing every hand, so be patient. We'll get to you as soon as we can, including... So this question goes back to just the common sense of this idea about blending in in a foreign country. And the point, the comment is, you're going to stick out like a sore thumb if you walk around with pain on your faces. So how will the training be recognized by the citizens? Will there be any interaction there? And how will we know that it's special military officers who are in town to be trained? Or will we know? Is this going to be covert?
Well, a lot of it, Your Honor, is going to take place on private land or private property. It's going to really negate out a lot of that. But if somebody's transported through quarantine, they are actually going to be doing exercise. They will have an orange type arm.
So it really isn't a covert operation. We're not trying to hide anything from the public. Everybody who's here will have an identification on their arm.
For the personnel going through the training, they will exercise support personnel, so if I'm out here and I just want to check on the train, I'll just be wearing something like this. And then some of the guys that, like I said, going through the training who are out on the private land, they're just going to want to get their signature load and that's it.
All right. One more question before I get to this one. Are you planning on detaining or rounding up any American citizens?
No, that's against the law.
And are you planning on knocking on any citizens' doors?
No, we shouldn't have to. Now, let me chop you off that way. If some RMT...
And he said all progress.
So we would give proper notification, okay? So if you would mind, we would give proper notification. In this case, with this RMT, we don't have to go knock door to door. And if we're in a more built up area where there were more neighbors, I would go with a local law enforcement officer and go knock door to door and say, hey, during this period of darkness, there may be a helicopter that comes in over this field over here. Those are the only time we go to knock door to door and that's to put out information. We do that in conjunction with a local law enforcement officer. That will not occur or should not have to occur here in Bastrop. If it does, then we come back to the county courts.
Thank you for the question. Yes, sir.
My name is Rock Stewart, US Army veteran.
Thank you.
The question I have, and I may, I just need to be clear on this. Now, you're going to have plainclothes people that are going to be blending in, right?
On private property.
On private property.
Blending in with cows.
What, you got a bunch of people out there that are acting like they don't know and they're blending in or something, or?
It's part of the AR process, so you're in the military. You know, and they go back and they come in and say, hey, look, you did X, Y, and Z okay, but you didn't blend in well. Why didn't you blend in well? You've known you would have to go do this for a couple of months. You should have studied the area, say Eastern Europe, and look at how they dress and take in their mannerisms. And you should have prepared for that.
Okay, so you can guarantee us that I won't have to worry about gasping next to me being some kind of covert operation, got to gather information, that they'll come in later and figure everybody out?
No.
Okay. Thank you for your question. The gentleman here in the second row, black shirt.
Yes, sir. Everybody really truly wants this to be something that it's not. And they're not embracing it. They really want this to be overseas. And we really, all we want to do is make sure that our guys are trained for combat overseas. That's it.
Same kind of excuses Hitler used to take over Germany, too.
Let me ask a couple of questions from the folks downstairs while we're moving the microphone to the show. Is this kind of training something that is to be done to help secure our government order?
We would train it to...
We may go to the President without...
But we should be good at our first.
Texas Governor can't secure the border.
You've mentioned the history of the training and 25-year history of our RMT.
Yes, sir.
Has any citizen, civilian, been hurt or killed during any of these training exercises?
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Robin Sage is a gas station training event, okay? We will talk about Robin Sage.
Someone was killed there, sir.
Yes, and it was a soon-to-be green beret was shot and killed by a sheriff's deputy. The sheriff's deputy did not know that the exercise was taking place. Robin Sage is a program of record that has been in place for over 50 years in the central Ebon, Northern Carolina, against the mountains of Northern Carolina. Unfortunately, about eight years ago, the notification went out, but it was not passed down to every person that it should have made its way to. There was an altercation that took place. The soon-to-be green beret was part of the exercise scenario. The deputy sheriff had no idea what was going on. And the deputy sheriff shot and killed the soon-to-be green beret. Additional control measures were put in place. But again, the RMT process is also in place for 25 years. And that's why we coordinate with local officials and local law enforcement with that.
You use the term soon-to-be green beret. Does that mean that this individual was not in the military?
He was in the military. They were going through their past known training events.
So he was not a citizen or a civilian? And he was not a civilian?
He was a military training that was shot and killed. And the exercises were culminated in about a few weeks. They would include over to the hot core and they would have gone to green berets.
Very unfortunate, sir. Your question, sir, please state your...
My name is James Gillum. I'm a district director with the Texas Nationalist Movement. I'm also a former veteran. Want to thank you for your service, Colonel. My question is, have you mentioned earlier upholding the Constitution, which is also the oath that I took? That being said, the Constitution calls for the defense of the United States. Wouldn't the money be better spent that is being used on Jade Helm since it's in such a wide area that you're doing, you know, Texas, Arizona, Utah?
Florida, California.
Wouldn't that be better spent defending the southern border of the United States?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's your last question, Charlie, because above this page, I can say that... I won't ask him to answer that, but thank you for your... I won't miss...
It's a matter of national policy, so you should take it to the national level leadership here, sir.
It's not a question to be asked in this operation. Mr. Su Long, please take over the microphone. Someone downstairs has written this question. If you find in your operations here dangerous people or areas that may be dangerous, would you take control of them, that is of these situations?
If there is something that you would notice as a good Samaritan yourself, say someone getting beat down on the highway, we would probably stop and just do the proper thing and take out of control and then call local law enforcement and let them handle it. But Samaritan is what we would do at that one time.
All right. One follow-up question and then Ms. Long. I would like to be a volunteer as a lifelong resident of Bastrop, Texas, county to be a part of this exercise. It would be a privilege and an honor for me to do so. Is there an opportunity for me to volunteer?
We have had a lot of people come forward and want to volunteer as role players. We're not really set up for that. We have had other people, including just three days ago, volunteer large swaths of acreage, up to 1,400 acres was the most recent. Those usually come in, we look at them, we vet them, and we talk with them and explain everything upfront. But there is room. This thing's really getting wired and tight at this point in time, so to add anything more on to it probably isn't going to happen.
Good, Ms. Long.
My name is Su Long. I'm just curious, this private landowner, how did they know to come to you to volunteer? I, you know, I just haven't heard about this until the last week and maybe I'm just in the dark somewhere, but there must be a way for them to have learned about this.
It's word of mouth, so it usually starts with a veteran who understands the RMT process and knows what we want to achieve through our training events, get our guys ready for overseas, the hornets. And then from there it spreads to the people and you say, hey, I know someone else over there. It's truly word of mouth.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Question about the water. With Bastrop shortage of water, where are you going to get 500 gallons of water at a time? That's just...
Five thousand gallons of water.
Yeah, so there is Camp Swift. Some of the exercises take place on Camp Swift. And the water is provided to the military through the means on Camp Swift. We use those things that are available to us.
Okay, Mr. Dahmer, where are you? I mean, Mr. Snyder. Let's get the microphone, the gentleman in the striped shirt right there in the middle. Go ahead and state your name and answer your question, please.
My name is Daniel Newclough, and I'm a resident of Bastrop, Texas. I grew up here. I've got a rich family military history, so thank you for your service. You said the Department of Homeland Security was not involved. However, they are a cabinet position. It's under the jurisdiction of the President. And you are also under the jurisdiction of the President. So under the Bush administration, there's a document created, which is part of a bigger idea, but it was called Right Wing Extremism: Current Economic and Political Climate-Fueling Resurgent and Radicatization in Recruitment. And I won't get too much into that. However, it talks about gun owners, Christians, veterans, people that believe in the Constitution. In fact, when I look around in this room, a lot of people that are represented in this room are in that document. And so it seems to me that it's maybe kind of a slight conflict of interest that the government would be here in Texas in a place where people believe in the Constitution, where there are a lot of Christians. And if you're not a Christian, you're still allowed to practice your religion and we respect that. And a lot of people that are proud to be gun owners. And so to see a big military buildup here, to me, I think those kind of people that pay attention and look at the documents the government puts out on right wing extremism under the Bush administration, but we've got a new President that, you know, I'm not going to go any further on that. But so I'm curious, and I'm no George Bush fan, but I'm curious, you said the Department of Homeland Security wasn't directly involved in this. Are you aware of that document, the Right Wing Extremism?
No, you'd have to, one, take up the issue that you have with the Department of Homeland Security on that.
Okay.
Two, when you say, hey, we're all in that category, that really does actually template across, I'd say, 90% of the military regardless of service. And I'd again have...
So do you find it kind of offensive that the government would potentially label you the terrorist, sir?
Mr. Clue, that's enough.
Okay, and also according to Mike over here, he was talking about representation, Mr. Poppy. I voted for you, sir, and I respect you. And the people of Bastrop do not want this.
We have lots of them.
Okay.
I'd like to get the gentleman in the red shirt right here. I think, Mr. Watts.
My name is Tom Watts. I'm a vet. And I have a question. Who's the suit?
Yeah.
At the beginning of the meeting, Tom.
Well, his name was given, but not what he does or who he is.
He is in charge of the operations, special, and exercise design.
All right. One thing I'd like to say about special ops, I spent 20-plus years as a super spook. You know what that is, don't you? If this gets noisy, it's going to be because they did something wrong. It's not their job to be noisy. But I do have another question. You thought of the fact that you believe in supporting the Constitution. Why aren't you doing this job in Washington DC where they don't believe in the Constitution instead of here?
Thank you. I've been in the Army 27 years. This is my passion. This is the way that I serve my country.
Thank you.
Daniel, can you tell me, K T U's? You mentioned that the FBI and other state departments are going to participate in this practice. And I was wondering if you could give me an example of what specifically they're going to be doing? You mentioned that they used to gather evidence in the field. This is not Iraq or Afghanistan. So what sort of evidence will you be looking for or training them to search for here?
So again, with the State Department, it's all about nation building. So we want to make sure that, hey, with the role players that are there representing the forces that we would interact with overseas, what do they need for to establish their government or solidify their government? Or do they need something from an offshoot of the State Department, USAID? Okay, maybe there's a medical emergency or a crisis that we don't know about. And then we go back and we back up through the communications chain and make sure that it gets to the right person at the higher headquarters who's representing the State Department or USAID. Vice versa, I said there would be a representative from the FBI working at the higher headquarters on a federal installation in support of this exercise. He will be looking at some of the message traffic that comes back up. And with one of the role players, he may ask, hey, you know, we got, it could be just an inject. An inject is something that will drive the exercise. They may come back and say, hey, this guy who you've identified as Clark Herkenstein, okay? We really don't think he's Clark Herkenstein. We think... okay, we really don't think he's Clark Herkenstein, we think he's helmet pull. And it just drives the exercise. That's it, that's all they're doing. They make sure that we're training up and down.
So they would only be used for?
Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, so they would only be used in a scenario of here not actually gathering any sort of, and they won't even be here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'd like if you'll bring the mic back to this side of the room for the gentleman in the red shirt here. We have some other questions that we'll get to. And one question for me, why weren't you prepared for this huge turnout? You know, this is a great country we live in, and social media has added a whole new level of citizen involvement. And frankly, I am pleasantly surprised to see the public input here and the public interest here. I think I sense that as being a thing that's good for America, good for democracy, and should we ever do this again, we'll know to have this over the convention center. Just didn't expect quite this much responsibility. Thank you for being here, and we're trying to accommodate everybody as comfortably as possible. Have a couple more here and then we'll get to your gentleman. So you talked about terrain and distances. Why are you not utilizing on-base sites for these kinds of things? And the last question is for me, one of the other couple, I've voted this, we've talked about that. Why is it so important to do this off-base?
Again, if the realistic military training takes place off the federal installation, we know those installations like the PAX, our hands, it's really getting out there and exposing them to new terrain that they're not familiar with, including the road networks that they may have in drop, like, in Texas.
Yes, sir.
I guess, Karen, I'm from Dallas. I guess my question is related to that last question about why does it need to be done here? And you mentioned that these activities have been going on for 25 years, so one of my questions is, curious to know how this one compares in size and scope to the ones that have happened before? And in relation to that or in conjunction with that, why now? We've been in the Middle East for 20 years, you know, so why now? And then.
What more can you learn?
And then the other thing was, is I'm a little confused. Am I correct that this activity is going to be going on between hours of 11:00 PM and 2:00 or 3:00 or 4:00?
24 hours a day.
Okay. Well, because I'm just, I guess I'm confused because you keep saying that it has to do with allowing interaction with the civilians by letting your guys blend in, but then we keep talking about how we're not going to see them. And so I can't understand, when I think of special ops, I mean, and again, I'm a layman, I'm.
Don't get too editorial. Your question, you actually asked two questions, let me answer those questions.
Well, my thought is that special ops, late at night blending in, you mentioned searching for bombs that had been given to children.
No, that was, no, that was an example.
Right, but I mean, example of, my understanding was of what they're going to be trained for over here. I'm just very confused as to.
So, and that's what I talked about earlier on, 14 years of combat still going on. We've been exercising two of the core tasks associated with that. There are at least 20 other core tasks that we need to train on that we have not been able to because of the high off tempo. Things are kind of slowing down a little bit, and we need to get back to the basics, back to the fundamentals. Some of these tasks the guys have not trained on since they went through the Special Forces qualification course. You have another question within there?
Well, I guess you answered the why now, but I guess I'm still confused as to the whole blending in. I don't understand, I don't, first of all, the one question was, how's it related size and scope to the previous ones?
Okay, so.
I mean, this is, this to me seems like a broad coordinated event over multiple states.
Correct.
But again, why now? What are we planning for? What are we anticipating for in the future?
Future operations overseas, we.
Well, we're in Chicago, man.
Yeah.
If we're in Italy, what are we already doing?
Let's break this down. We've already fought the last 14 years, okay? Special Operations Forces look toward the future. All right, so in order to do that, we know how to fight what we've been going through the last 14 years. We've pretty much mastered that, okay? We've been neglecting because of the off tempo of our other skill sets. We have to make sure that we maintain the edge on those skill sets because we may be called upon them to be used in the future. You don't want to have a skill and then forget how to use it when you're called upon, or say, hey, hold on, I need nine months to train up on that. Your special operations, you need to have that in your hip pocket right away.
Thank you. The gentleman behind the camera there, Blake, if you can, microphone, while you're going there. Here's a question, and I'm not sure of the language. How do you reconcile this with training videos of US Marines training for riot control involving sovereign citizens? Is there anything there?
One, I'm not aware of that training. I can speak for United States Army Special Operations Command, so to ask me a question about Marine Corps and then for me to answer, you're responsible at S.
But you're not training Army to, for, in riot control involving sovereign citizens?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Blake, the gentleman behind the camera.
Jakari Jackson. Oh, thank you, and this gentleman has had his hand up for a long time, so if it would please, the court, maybe you can talk next. First of all, sir, could I have you two gentlemen, just for my camera?
What's your name, sir?
I'm sorry, my name is Jakari Jackson, info@wars.com. Oh, thank you. Anyway, for the two gentlemen, can you guys, just for the camera, state your names and positions again?
I'll state my name. I'm the spokesman for United States Army Special Operations Command. I'm the guy giving the brief.
Yes, sir.
I'm Lieutenant Colonel Mark Listor and Director of Public Preparation, United States Army Special Operations Command, Fort Bragg, North Carolina.
Okay, now we're talking about role players, and you mentioned the role players, so I'm curious as to how you guys came about these role players, and also will there be any drills to round up and/or detain the role players?
As far as the role players go, they are going to be service members, and if there's an incident like that, it's going to be within the scope of the exercise for unconventional warfare for future operations overseas.
Well, will anybody be detained or rounded up in the exercise?
It's possible. It's for future operations overseas, so in the convention of unconventional warfare, all right, there could be a point where it goes connect. So, and then you have to execute actions on the objective.
Well, I guess we keep coming back to the same question, how are these guys going to blend in overseas? I mean, and at night?
It all starts from the basics, okay? We don't just go and say, run. You got to crawl, you got to walk, and then you're running. So to start blending in, and we do it back here, we start picking up things that will apply later on. Hey, I do need to pay attention to certain Texas shoes. These aren't available over here. And like I said before, and people were disagreeing with me, they dress differently than they have in North Carolina. They just do, it's the songs.
Okay, so. I'm just making sure more to tackle the scope to the gentleman here.
My name is Daryl Bartley, I live here in Bastrop. And I know with any kind of operation, you said this is a joint exercise, of course, that's going to take some time to ramp up if you're going to be ready to perform these exercises for two months. How come we weren't informed on the ramp up time? Are you here now ramping up, getting ready? People are coming in.
Thank you for answering that question.
And, well, we've noticed, we've also noticed along the hostile territories as depicted in your map, some UN trucks, vehicles with UN on it?
No, if those trucks do exist, they have nothing to do with Jade Helm, training exercise Jade Helm.
So DHS, DHS FEMA or UN is not involved in this?
Yeah, or even the wall are closing, so.
Thank you. Blake, if you'll come back over here. Mr. Weryham has her hand up and been very patient. Glad you called. Mike Herron, while you're doing that way, give a brief shirt. Realistic training, when dealing with armed opposition, identifying and arming and supporting local friendly forces, are these components involved in this training?
Parts of those, actually, yes, they are, but they're done with role players.
And they're done?
And the role players are located.
All right. We've asked already about that. Mr. Weryham?
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Terry Weryham. I'm a Bastrop County resident. I'm also with the Bastrop County Tea Party. I was here at the meeting on January 26th, when I heard Mr. Mead's presentation, and I've also been doing some additional research. And I'm kind of hearing some discrepancies in what's wrong from there, what I've heard in some other presentations that he's done. First of all, if private landowners came to the military and invited them on their property, why do we have this type of a presentation? Why do we need to have the invitation from the Commissioner's Court and also from like the city Smithville Council? Why do we need that? Also, we were told this was unconventional training. Mr. Mead gave the analogy that this would be like the French Resistance during World War II, where the French resisted against the German occupation. Well, what you're saying today doesn't quite make sense. If you've got 60 people coming to private property, I don't understand what this big, what the big deal is all about then.
Your question, Mr. Weryham?
Well, if you're trained on private property, you know, why do you need to have the invitation from the Commissioner's Court?
It's notification for the coordination, make sure that it's done safely for everybody involved. And the MOU, MOA, again, goes back for whatever reason we may damage a bridge or something to that nature. It's a rule concurrence, that's all it is. Now, going back to the, your culture, your analogy.
Well, this is Mr. Mead's analogy.
Right, it's a legitimate analogy. It's historic case, the French Resistance organized by the precursor to the United States Army Special Forces, which was the OSS. They helped them, they supplied them, they made sure they were able to talk on radios and communicate with their forces. You're asking 60, it just doesn't seem right. Some of those people are exercised for to make sure that, hey, you know, nothing's going to go wrong, and role players. And then there will be one ODA, an A-Team. Some people refer to them as A-Team, that's the popular connotation of it. I can tell you, you know, if anyone wants to do their research on it, and there are SF veterans out here, that 12-man element is just practicing their skills that they need to operate overseas. When they go overseas, they have the capability and the capacity to build up from farmers, schoolteachers, clerks, a 650-man force to go work overseas and take care of things that are in our national interest. So that's what 12 men do. We're training small groups, but really the larger part of this exercise is the communication back and forth on this from the higher headquarters, make sure that it's a push-pull.
But it's on private property?
Correct.
So I don't understand. Yeah, who are you flirting with then if you're on private property?
Yeah, the role players, and it'll be done on private property.
Doesn't make it, it's like, it's like, it's like.
Military personnel, quad there are involved in this training, private property, subject to local and state laws and regulations. Yes, it's for Jade Helm. So if we go speeding down, we're going to get into it.
As you will.
Hi, my name's Mark Harris, and I'm a resident of Bastrop, I'm also a former military special operation soldier. Colonel, appreciate you being here today to present the Army's position. Not everybody's comfortable with that, but there are many of us in the community that are here to be supportive in any way that we can to ensure that these soldiers are trained. Trained soldiers stabilize, not only foreign, foreign people, the US citizens themselves. The more soldier trains in more adverse conditions, the more terrain that you can experience, will better equip them to deal with whatever they're going to encounter when they get somewhere. We have in the past had some Germans, the Koreans, South Americans, to be supported by our training, tens of thousands of troops going into Europe for reformation. We were dealing with mission warfare. We have all.
Let's get to the question.
So my question would be, what examples can we look to from past operations in the US and out that might serve as models for citizens to get better informed through a non-tainted view, right? So a objective view, I guess.
And some of those are simple as just an airfield seizure. So there are a lot of paratroopers at Fort Bragg, North Carolina, the whole division of the 82nd right there. They constantly practice airfield seizure. Airfield seizure was a mission essential task both in Panama and Grenada, and that's a perfect example where people see why training non-stop has to occur. So as they trained at Fort Bragg, they started looking at other places where they could train off-post as well to get exposure to new terrain, new airfields, and just add a new level of experience before they go into combat.
The lady beside you there, Blake, but let me ask a couple of these from downstairs, and again, I appreciate the folks down there for their participation. Will any of this exercise have anything to do with Agenda 21?
I'm not familiar with what Agenda 21 is.
Good. What is the highest level of the government, the federal government, that approved this operation?
Okay, so, no, it's approved at the local level. Some people, hey, may have called their congressman and found out, hey, my congressman doesn't know about training exercise Jade Helm. In the R and T process, there are three levels, level one, two, and three. Level three requires congressional notification. Jade Helm is predominantly a level one. In some places where a helicopter may come in, in a certain period of darkness, it moves it up to a level two. So then on top of it, people may have called their congressman and they still didn't know anything about Jade Helm. Not every congressman sits on every committee, all right? Not every committee represents Special Operations Command. It comes down to that. Now, we have made coordination with the governor's office, and we have also made coordination with the border control as well, because they had some concerns, and we just said, hey, here's student maneuver, and we just wanted to make sure we weren't crossing paths at all, and we had another unfortunate incident like we did about a few years.
All right. Blake, if you'll get the microphone, the gentleman, I'm sorry, you first sit in, then the gentleman in the red shirt. Yes, Blake?
Hi there. My major question is, I'm looking at Jade Helm, and I live near Bastrop. As you said, there's a lot of activity on social media with this, and not all of it's true. And so my question is, I've seen that this Jade Helm event is happening in many other states. I was wondering if you could clarify, how many states are being affected by this and what other counties are being affected in Texas?
I don't have a list of counties with me. The other states are Arizona, New Mexico, Mississippi, Louisiana, Florida.
You call.
And.
You call.
Thank you. So the extent of things occurring in Florida will happen on the Air Force Base Federal Installation. The extent of things happening in Louisiana will be on Camp, Mississippi's Camp Shelby, Louisiana is Camp Bogart, and then here in Texas, and then on military installations in the other states.
Are we the only ones that are being held on private property?
Utah, and, yeah, Utah.
Utah and Bastrop County are the only?
No, no, there are other counties in Texas as well. I don't have that list.
Do we have?
The hostile one.
I think it's up to 12.
So they're.
It's on private land.
So are you? Kamau Tasi? Kamau Tasi Act?
Kamau Tasi Act.
So does that act prohibit the operation that you're conducting here on private property? Should that be required to be on a military basis?
No, because we're not doing any type of law enforcement. We're just training for operations overseas, for future operations overseas.
Good. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Theodore Zuniga, and thank you so much for being here. This is awesome. This is awesome, I'm so glad I've gotten to be a part of this. And thank you for your service, thank you for being here. I would like to ask, this is really the only thing I'm wondering. Let's say during the training, which is happening on private property, first of all, there's a lot of people in Bastrop, or maybe not a lot, but there are people in Bastrop who are very against Jade Helm, and there are some people who are for it. I am just here to figure out, what would happen if someone who is radically against Jade Helm, what would happen if there is an altercation between them and the training? They get on the training land, some kind of altercation happens, I'm not sure what it is. What is y'all's process for dealing with that altercation? And what happens? Does it go directly to the local police department? Or is that something y'all handle? And what happens because of that? What are the repercussions for that? Is there a total shutdown of that property? Is there a shutdown of the surrounding properties? Is there a shutdown of our county? What is y'all's repercussions? And what is y'all's way of handling an altercation if one was to happen?
The short answer on that is, one, I won't find it bizarre that someone would want to violate someone else's private property to make a statement, when everybody's concerned about their own private and individual rights. But we'll go with this scenario. We would call local law enforcement at that point in time. It's a law enforcement issue at that point in time.
And are there already plans? And have y'all already drawn out, okay, if this was to happen, just to be ready, if this was to happen, do y'all already have some kind of plans as far as what chain of command that process would go through, and what y'all would do in order to mitigate that circumstance?
The short answer is we do, yes.
Thank you. The lady right in front of you, Blake, she'll be next, but will drones be used in any way here in this exercise?
Yes, sir.
Will there be any roadblocks that would impede the new republic from driving up and down county or state roads during this exercise?
None.
None?
If there were, we'd have to work out with you. That's why there are any.
Thank you. Exactly. Your question, ma'am, if you'd stand and speak to me and ask your question.
My name is Vivian Waddling. Can you tell us how many pieces of private property are involved in this exercise, and how you're going to transport your personnel betwixt and between these properties?
So, it's, again, 12 counties, significant amount of private land associated with that, and I don't have an exact number for you. We can take your name, number, back.
Here to Bastrop, yes.
It could be up to, I think it's 15 private landowners here in Bastrop County. Moving in between, exercise support, make sure that we have water for those guys, the prime movers, it's two Humvees. To move people in between, as necessary, we will have rental vehicles. Also, one of the things is working with the private landowner. The private landowner may have a piece of non-standard equipment, say like a cattle truck, and he may move somebody on a cattle truck from point A to point B. Much like you find in Europe, they move people from point A to point B on non-standard vehicles.
Thank you. The gentleman over here in the gray shirt. You already answered, and the troops will be involved. Where will these troops, how will these troops be housed?
Okay, so, the ones working out on the private land, they can stay on the private land. Some people, for coming in as specific role players or for exercise support, will stay hotels here.
Does the housing of these troops in any part of the Jade Helm 15 military training exercise have anything to do with recent Walmart closures, anywhere in here?
No, it was, again, everybody wants this to be something that it's not, and they'd like to pin everything on Jade Helm that happens. An extra minutes worth of research quickly figures out the closure of the Walmarts because due to labor disputes. So, they've either wearing eyes at Walmart's or the Walmarts, and it's just easier to say, no, it's really Jade Helm.
All right, that brings me to this question. Are you aware that Army helicopters have already been flying over property in Bastrop County? I understand that these officers are supposed to start from July 15. So, is there any correlation between the fact that the military training base that's been here for a long, long time, and the fact that every day, two or three choppers will fly over in formation, moving from one part of Texas to the... Is this a part of the Jade Helm at all?
No, sir, it's not. It has nothing to do with Jade Helm. That includes, I think there was concern of jet aircraft as well.
I want the public to know that we have supported military training here in Bastrop County for a long time. We're the home to the largest National Guard training facility in the state of Texas. Ten to thousands of men and women come here every year to train at camps with. We're going to continue to see military training, there are going to be people walking up the downer streets in fatigues, eating in our restaurants, buying gas at our stores. They have nothing to do with Jade Helm. So, let's be respectful of that, and not overplay this and make it something that it really isn't. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, can I add on to that real quick? There are some cases out there where concerned citizens are just walking up to National Guardsmen and harassing them about Jade Helm. If they're not in Army Special Operations Command, they're not going to know about Jade Helm. They're just doing their job, and that goes to airmen, marines, and sailors as well. And people are going into recruiting stations, and they're not going to know about Jade Helm. They're not in Army Special Operations Command.
And I'm just asking all the citizens in Bastrop County to show the respect that you always show to our military and everyone who come here to train. Thank you. Then, Hector, I'm a retired Army Major, and I appreciate the explanation you've been given, because it's alleviating a lot of our concerns. My primary focus is safety of the civilians, so I have a few more questions, quick ones. Will there be observer controllers with each of the teams out in the field?
Yes.
Okay, and my understanding, what you say is that there will be no training events that occur in the town when they come in to resupply or get any support, correct?
In Bastrop, there will not be, none of them, none of them will be in cities whatsoever.
Will there be any type of events in towns, other places in Texas?
On private property.
Just on private property?
Private property.
Okay. I'm assuming that there's going to be an op or opposing force?
There, we just have the role players that are a part of it. So, some of the role players will, that they injects in as necessary.
But there will be no, in strange uniform op or on private property that want to go get a burger at lunch and come into town?
No, they won't be wearing a uniform to come into town to get a burger, some weird-looking uniform. They will be in, if they come in uniform, like, I want to get a burger, I'll be in this uniform.
Okay, so, there is, to alleviate, again, I'm sorry to double that, but there aren't going to be any type of events where someone drives up and there's a deputy sheriff and somebody as a guerrilla or somebody as a host nation person wanting to check IDs on the public road. So, thank you very much. Thank you. While you're there, Blake, just move around to this gentleman in the blue and red shirts. While he's doing that, I'll be asking this one. Well, actually, those are both been asked before. Wonderful questions from both this audience and the one downstairs, but I think we're getting, now that we're kind of rehashing, recovering from some territory. Somebody asked if they could get a copy of the transcript of this meeting? The answer is yes. It'd be part of the public record. It'd be a little bit expensive to do that, but you're certainly welcome to ask for that through the Open Records Act, and it will be available through our public records office, who is the official keeper of fairly business. Your question, your main question, sir?
Mr. Sheriff, President of the Commission, plenty of John Deeds, practice law, about 25 years. My primary residence is outside the United States now, in large part, as instead of saying, we can go a police state, and I feel free here in a separate country than I do in my own country anymore. My question, and I do appreciate your service, and no question, taking note that most of the folks who are serving the military like you're very honorable, but we cannot deny the fact that there's been this rendition program by our own government, with honorable people like you, as sworn O's, have engaged in horrific, embarrassing, for probably everyone in this room, kidnapping foreign citizens in foreign countries and taking them places for torture. There's one in Germany and Germany and stuff, they got taken to Slovenia or Slovakia for three weeks, and was tortured horribly, and let go on a street in Eastern Europe, only to return to Germany and say, hey, you got the wrong guy.
Let's focus on Jade Helm, and your question here.
Yes, sir. My question is, why is it not reasonable? Look, these folks, we aren't going to be traveling in rental cars or cattle trucks in Afghanistan or any other country. Why is it not reasonable, for me, as a private citizen who just questions things, and any conspiracy theories, but somebody just has some reasonable questions, why is it not reasonable for me to see this as absolute training for a domestic rendition program, where eventually, for space scenario, if things go bad, good folks like yourself, sworn O's, are going to go after Alex Jones, Joe Biggs, Kara Jackson? Why is it not reasonable, sir, for me to be scared about that?
Good question. Let's like...
So, I'm taking away that from you, that's your own belief, and you're entitled to it, but I present the facts as they are, and that's just how it is. You may not agree with them, and that's your right.
How Hitler started to take over Germany. We're not here, I did not call this, and the court didn't agree to have this special meeting to convince anybody of anything. We're here to share information, and that's why we conducted it in this way. You may go away from here believing just the same thing you believe when you came in, and that's your right as an American to do that, and part of this training is going to continue to defend your right as an American to do that. Thank you. The gentleman on the second row there in front of you, Blake, if you would.
Judge, it's your obligation to understand how these people feel, and this is a one-sided conversation. It's nothing but questions, and nobody gets to make a statement about what it appears to be to us. So, that might be necessary.
Yes, sir, thank you. Your name, Mark, your question.
My name's Ross Sealer. I have a question, one, Bill.
Ross, I didn't realize you were asking a second question. A lot of people in here haven't had a chance to ask one.
Okay.
If you don't mind, please, let's go ahead and pass the mic over to the gentleman in the blue and red shirt there. There are several who haven't had a chance to ask one question. Ross, thank you. Stand up, please, state your name.
My name is Pablo. If asking confiscated guns, what would you do?
Well, it's not part of the training exercise whatsoever, so it's not going to happen.
So, if you're ordered to confiscate guns, you wouldn't do it, right?
Talking hypotheticals, you can ask, what would you do? Ask me as a private citizen, what would you do? Okay, I'm here representing the United States Army Special Operations Command. I'm not in a private capacity, so if you see me on the street someday, ask me that question, I'll answer as a private citizen.
And I think he stated clearly he was not a part of this military training exercise, so the answer is he won't be asked. The mic, please take it to the back of the room, the young lady who's been a patient and wanted to be in. Thank you.
Gigi Berger, Lee County. Will you put any notices out to the people in neighboring counties when it actually gets ready to go live?
We understand that there are shared borders within the counties, so the media advisory is the notification, even with local law enforcement, to an county that abus here at Bastrop, that will occur as well.
So, sheriff, police department, is that what we're talking about?
And media advisory as well.
Okay, well, no, that's... Second question, going dark, what does that mean when you're actually, when it's dark? Are you guys actually going to be completely dark, or...
When I said we're operating in a period of darkness?
Yes, sir.
That just means nightfall.
Okay, but you won't be actually having any, cutting any power, right?
No, it just means, it's how we refer to nightfall. We just keep track of time, by way, period of darkness number one, two, three.
Okay, and cyber operations, is there any cyber security in this particular exercise?
Not here in Bastrop, in a notional sense, in a notional sense only. There will be some cyber attacks, but they're all notional, it's not on a network.
And one more question that is on these documents, is this for World War III?
No, and I've heard that before. I've heard a lot of things that says...
Okay, thank you.
The young lady from Lee County, well, Lee County, are any of these operations, our military exercises being conducted in Lee County?
We don't need that one.
How about Fay County? How about Coleman County? How about Travis County? And how about Williams County? Okay. That's all, those are the five counties. Blake, if you move, I have more to say here. The gentleman sitting there on the second row, we'll ask him to stand, say his name and give his question, and then we'll take care of the others who are right there in that same area. Thank you.
My name is Paul Gibson of Cedar Creek. With all the comments being made here this morning, and to the judge, and to the colonel, I thank you for your service, but do you understand why the citizenry doesn't trust our federal government?
I understand that the people that spoke in that way here have those concerns, and I appreciate your opinion on that. But again, United States Army, 240 years, I've worn this uniform across five different administrations for 27 years, and, you know, if I was still a younger man, I'd wear it for another 27 more.
Someone else in the middle there have their hand up? Please state your name and ask your question.
My name is PJ Smith, former Habsburg C C T. I just have a question, during the R and Ts that you're being conducted, how many civilians have actually been injured, if at all, and what are those numbers, in the 25 years?
Yeah, so we discussed that earlier, there was that one fatal lady or operation from Sage back in North Carolina.
Not civilian.
Not civilian.
So, the answer is zero. There's a gentleman there with a camera, and also his hand up, so give the mic over to him, if you would, Blake. Thank you, yes, sir.
My name is Colin Wright. I appreciate your service. My question is, do you really expect the strategies and tactics of blending in with the people of Bastrop, Texas, and the coordination with county law enforcement to apply overseas?
Sir, it's a starting point. Again, we crawl, we walk, we run, and we train. So, you start here, we train, and we learn some things. And then, when we go somewhere else, we learn some more, and it's just, it all really builds upon itself.
Okay, is there a reason why you're starting here?
We just look for, one, that land is volunteer, so it all starts by private citizens, private citizens coming forward, saying, hey, not only do I support the military in my word, I'm going to support it in my deed. So, from there, word of mouth, travels, other people want to volunteer land, and you're able to put together a training scenario that works as a template for overseas operations.
Thank you very much, Blake. There's a gentleman on the second row forward there, in the green shirt, if you hand him the microphone, he's got his hand up. Is that your name, sir?
Yes, my name is Dean Brown, live here in Bastrop. We, many of us, our neighbors here, went through a very traumatic experience with fires. Several of us are still not over that psychologically, and we know our neighborhoods are not over that. Why would we want to subject us to this level of anxiety on the hill, so that kind of catastrophic then?
That's a very good question, and I have to say that part of that is to blame, to blame for that would be laid on me. I did not anticipate any anxiety from the public of Bastrop County regarding this realistic military training. When the program was explained to me, as it's been explained to you today, it sounded to me like a great idea, it's something that we should support, because we understand the value of training, and we train people here, this is a big part of our economy. Many people live in Bastrop County today because they came here as a part of our special Air Force Base. They liked it here, they stayed here, they retired here, bought land and lived and raised their families here. I honestly had no idea that there would be this kind of public concern about it. Again, I'm naive about social media, I didn't know that it was such a powerful tool in sharing information, it's also a powerful tool in sharing misinformation. And so, a lot of what we're seeing here today is a surprise to me, but it's part of the public process, it's part of the democratic process, and I'm very glad we're doing this. But, again, the information has been shared, answers have been given honestly, clearly, succinctly, and you take that and deal with it, and make of it what you will, but if I, as your county judge, thought we were in one iota of a danger from this military training coming to Bastrop County, I would do all I could to put a stop to it. I do not feel that way. If your Commissioners' Court felt any angst at all about this, we wouldn't try to put a stop to it. That's not what we feel. And I just, and I'm being elaborate on this question, but I think we've raised a... a really important issue. Bastrop County, many citizens of Bastrop County are still suffering and reeling from the disaster three and a half years ago. Uh, we will live with that the rest of our lives, those of us who have lived in Bastrop County. Um, but we, hopefully, we cannot let that be a negative anchor in our lives. We're trying to move on as a county. We're doing all we can to, to, to be, uh, resilient and to bounce back from that and to be better, and I think in a lot of ways Bastrop County is. Um, we support our military, we support training, I just feel like this would be a good thing for Bastrop County, because that's what we do. There's a young lady at the back there, the visitor hand up, and then the gentleman in the hat in the back. I really wish, just out of respect for the court, not anybody else, if, if all of you could have hats on, would remove them, please, while you're in the court. Uh, the young lady first, and then the gentleman in the back.
Uh, my name is Casey DeCleve, and my question is more opposed towards the Commissioners Board. Um, as citizens, since we are so disturbed by this training, is there anything that we can do to reverse this decision? Or, you know?
We should be able to.
Can we, can we vote? Do we need to protest? What can we do to have our voices heard?
Well, I think, uh, Mrs. DeCleve, your voices have been heard today, and we thank you for that. Um, I can't say what the court would do about it, but I know what I would do, and that is, uh, I, I would ask these gentlemen who have heard your concerns and, uh, and have given you answers about things that you've asked about, to, uh, to make this a part of their operation here in Bastrop County, to be sure that none of the angst that has been expressed here today is justified, and that they come here and do their training and, uh, move in and move out, and we may never know they were here, any more than you don't know when four, five hundred or a thousand, uh, troops come into Camp Smith Military Base for training. That happens every weekend and throughout the summer, all during the week. You know, that doesn't worry us, that doesn't worry us. We have Humvees driving up and down the highways of Bastrop County all summer long, uh, some of the convoys. Uh, no one worries about martial law or, uh, citizens arrest or any of those kinds of things under those circumstances. This training, as it's been explained to us, is simply an extension of the training that needs to happen so that our troops are safer and more effective all around the world, and I, I think that we have, uh, I think we're in a good position here to provide this training. You have a follow-up question, Mr. DeCleve?
So essentially, what you're saying is this decision has been made, and there's nothing that we can do as private citizens to reverse it?
The decision has been made, and, um, I, I'm not going to say that there's nothing that would, uh, I, I will say this, if, if, if the information that has been given to us at this meeting had been contradictory to what we had already been told about it, then it would be our responsibility as your Commissioners Court to do all we could, all within our power, to put a stop to it, if we thought it was a threat to the citizens of Bastrop County or create any civil unrest or any risk to you. But the facts have changed.
Yes, but, but you all, as public servants, when you see this much unrest, does it not disturb you that you're not representing your citizens' needs?
Of course, we're, we are very into, to our citizens' concerns, and that's why we had this meeting, by the way, and that's why we asked people for their input, but we've heard your concerns, and we've heard your answers, their answers to your concerns, and, um, I, I, I think we're ready to move forward with this.
I want to, and I, I want to stop.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCleve. I'm asking these gentlemen to-
I want to know the steps that we can take as citizens for it to stop.
Thank you. And after these gentlemen take all of this into the milieu of their planning for this summer, and to do all within their power to make sure that, uh, none of these fears and, and worries, uh, affect the citizens of Bastrop County. We do have a couple more questions. The gentleman who removed this cowboy hat, thank you for doing that, hand the mic to him.
Yes, my name is Sean Magnoli. I have a two-part question. I wonder, just a guesstimation, how many acres does the Army possess for training in the United States?
Sorry?
Yeah, would you say millions, somewhere around there?
Again, the RMT process takes the troops off of federal installations and exposes them to dirt terrain.
Okay, because you said you know that all, you know all of these trains like the back of your hand, that was a quote from earlier. I'm guessing your troops don't know all of these millions of acres, like, the back of their hands, so you could use those, since you've already spent billions of our dollars, our tax dollars, on those facilities, why go ahead and spend more billions on using private property?
Okay, one, it's not billions. Okay, so the, you're not getting back here.
So you don't, the military doesn't spend millions of dollars.
So that's an issue of the national policy and the Defense Department, you should take it up to the appropriate level.
Thank you. Would you hand the mic to the young lady in the green and blouse over here on the far side? She's, has her hand up. And let me just say this, at 1:00, um, we're going to take, uh, maybe one or two more questions. I think we're to the point now that the questions are being repetitive, and, uh, uh, everyone has had an opportunity to, uh, to let us know how they feel about this, we appreciate that. Uh, we're gonna, and I'm sure these gentlemen will stick around for a while if you want to talk to them individually, the court will stick around for a while. Um, might need up with you over there, or something, for a member, but, um, I, I think it's about time, let's, let's have this lady come in and maybe one or two more, and then we will call, uh, the, the, yes, ma'am, your name and your question.
Kathy Glass. Under the Texas Constitution, our Texas governor is Commander in Chief of the Texas Military State Guard, National Guard, Air National Guard. You said you coordinated with the governor's office. Did our governor approve this? And are any of our Texas military forces that I just mentioned going to participate or observe in this exercise? Thank you.
Okay, so with the participation of Texas, uh, forces?
We know there is some participation with Texas National Guard or-
Other than using the installations that we've already mentioned. Um, regarding the governor, we do, uh-
We have, we have coordinated with-
We have coordinated with the governor's office.
And did he approve it?
There was no issue with it.
Okay, I'm going to interpret that as he approved it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. Um, while we're here, the gentleman in the brown shirt, and then, uh, gentleman in the, uh, blue and colored shirt on this side.
Uh, sir, sir, I, I just would like to ask a question that-
Did you, did you not ask one earlier?
No, I don't.
You didn't? I'm sorry.
I'm curious, and he cut out your question that I had, so I'm going to hear me answer.
Yes, ma'am, I, I think, I know who your, what your question is, and, uh, I'll, I'll get to that, yes, ma'am. Go ahead, sir.
This, this is just a clarification. My name is Ben Zuniga, I'm from Bastrop. Um, I just wanted to clarify, will there be any role play done in the community in public? Because, the reason I'm concerned is because you mentioned that there was a need to blend in with people from Bastrop.
It's going to take place on private property.
How does that work? How does that work?
It works, it works within the aspects of the role play, but we're asking the soldiers to do. And it's being observed by experts. You are observing the exercise.
Want to follow up a question, will the people role playing, be dressed up as Bastropians?
Dress in civilian clothing.
But it's different. You can't do that. Thank you for your question. Uh, please, bring the mic to the lady in the middle. Um, I understand that there was a, bit of a problem with the, the downstairs, probably you missed part of an answer to a question, what was that question?
Yes.
Your name is what?
Voltaire DeClaire, Texas, Travis County. I was wondering about the logo for Jade Hill. You addressed that briefly, I didn't catch all of the answer. In particular, I'm curious about the symbology of the small wooden shoe.
The claw.
The claw, thank you.
So, yeah, so back in World War II, as part of the resistance against the, uh, the German occupation Nazi forces, uh, people from, uh, France, Holland, uh, Netherlands, they would take off their shoes and throw them into the machinery, the war machinery that the, the Nazi occupation had overtaken. Those shoes were called sabots, French word for shoes, saboteur, hence sabotage comes from that.
And what significance does it have to, yeah?
It goes back to just the unconventional warfare, uh, tracing back the lineage of , uh, US Special Forces, and, uh, how they helped the French Resistance during World War II, through a construct that was an organization called OSS, Office of Strategic Support.
You have a follow-up question?
I do, thank you. Will the, will the training exercise be focusing on playing both sides of the, uh, of the savage experience, the savagery, the, um, guerrilla warfare? Will the military be exercising and training in both those capacities, both, uh, helping insurgent population?
It's to, just to help insurgent populations overseas, or, or, uh, a group that's oppressed overseas.
And also being an invading, uh, invading army which is dealing with savagery, but also not part of it? Like, will, I would think that's what's similar to what happens in, uh, around Afghanistan countries which the US has, um, has gone into and faced insurgent populations. So, um, so how, how do you see the, the role of the sabotage being in that? Both sides, one side?
So for this exercise, it's, it's truly, just, it was just a symbol, just to trace the lineage back on that unconventional warfare, tracing everything back to OSS back in World War II.
Thank you. Yes, that's, that's fine. Blake, if you'll take the mic over to this gentleman.
I get a bit long when I do this.
Well, I'll stand. Um, we want to, on repeat, just one of your, the gentleman in the, uh, brown shirt there. State your name, please.
My name is Alex May. Is it possible that training on private land or the goals and missions of Jade Hill are subject to change under an attack from foreign land or under civil unrest?
Something goes down, the argument's a brown.
And I think the only thing that would stop Jade Hill, and we've discussed this, is a declaration of war, and we would have to mobilize the entire nation, so.
That would not be part of Jade, this Jade Hill training exercise.
Is it possible it could change?
Anything is possible, that would be a scenario, I mean, anything is possible. Look, uh, I think, I think we've had a very useful public hearing today, a lot of information been shared, uh, take this, uh, mulling over, discussing on yourselves, um, might get your old minds about it, but, um, uh, it's been a useful interchange of information, and I appreciate the way you've acted respectfully toward each other and toward our guests here today. Um, there's no way for us to answer every question with root of this size, uh, we could be here till midnight, and there's still be questions being asked, so that's not going to be considered. Uh, I'm going to now, Jeremy, and, uh, thank you.